I would like to request the board to allow me to move 21-042 to the front of the agenda immediately after minutes and warrants. Any objections?
No.
No, great. We'll proceed with the minutes for the Select Board Meeting of October 5, 2020. Before there's a motion, I did have a question, so it can be contained in the motion if necessary. And that is on page two, the third item on. The RFP for the library has not been done yet. The library board is requesting another grant. I always try to, you know, check myself out and so on and so forth. Was that something I completely missed? Was there a second grant they were requesting?
Yes. The Stephen King Foundation.
Yeah, they just started.
Okay, great. So I must have been lost in space. Great. Somebody please make a motion in regards to the minutes for October 5.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 5th as presented in the packet.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the October 5th, 2020 meeting as presented in the packet. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor. Who proceeds to warrants 15 and 16? Dennis?
Yes. The first one is payroll in the amount of $15,841.64. And then if you look, there are some, there are some things here that I'm just going to be honest with you, I need to have some help with. Some big items here, connectivity point design and install. Eric?
That is to convert from analog to digital.
Back here, right?
Back here.
Which has already been approved. We've done that before at the town meeting on the warrant.
That's correct.
Archie's, isn't that like a hallway service?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Excellent. David Ledoux is our assessor. Dear Go Architectural, that is the architectural firm. Is that for the final part of the dam or is that over here?
That's the fire station.
Okay, fire station.
And that should be the next to the last. I think we should have one more billing coming up for October, but later on in the agenda, I'll talk about how very close we are to that for at least the next couple of years.
Yes, okay. TBC.
Can I go back to Archie's?
Please.
But I guess I'll ask Eric.
But you're better.
Is Archie's doing our hauling now?
Archie's, so we had issues early on with them coming and clogging up the works. And so we've actually worked out with them. They can take, they haul directly, so our equipment doesn't have to compact it. They're bringing compacter trucks. It's their mileage, and we just pay the tipping fee at our rate.
So they take it up to Norwich Walk and leave it, and we pay the tipping for what?
Exactly. So rather than running through the town transfer station, which I think is a better deal and better outcome for us, because especially when they were doing the summer camps, when they were open last summer, they would completely overwhelm our equipment on a regular basis, July and August. And that's what led to this kind of transition. And so now they just, they just run up. And we do keep an eye on the numbers to make sure that it's reasonable.
And for those who have been keeping score at home, this is regarding the transfer station, hauling of materials from the transfer station to the big facility, as you mentioned, in Norwich Walk, just so people understand. Some of it, like tipping fee, all that stuff, or some things, maybe.
Yeah, the phrasing, yes.
Yes, go for it, Ralph.
One follow-up to this. Archie hauls for other towns. How do we know we don't have other MSW commingled?
We don't. They do the one thing, I guess I can't say with certainty, right? We don't with certainty. They haul for us on certain days. They deliver, you know, on certain days to waste management. So again, keeping track of the tonnages, making sure those are copacetic.
They're fairly consistent?
They're very consistent.
Okay.
Very consistent, yeah.
So the odds are he's playing by the rules.
Yeah, if we thought there was an issue.
It would show up.
We could certainly, yeah, it would show up and we could certainly take a look and ask Norwich Walk to keep an eye for us, or hey, can you pull a bag out for us? And we could take a look at the receipts, because there isn't a bag of trash in this country that doesn't include some personal information in it these days.
That's right.
So we do have means to.
You just have to be willing to tear it up.
We do have means to check that stuff, yeah.
So any other questions about that? Catherine, okay, great.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. Can you tell me a little bit about the Gregory Goucher one, 1500?
Greg Goucher, 1500. I'm trying to recall what that was.
Yeah.
Cemetery. Oh, cemetery. That was to cut down the tree at Whittier Cemetery, which had fallen down and was just sitting there with the fence taken down.
Yeah.
That's been cleaned up and removed, so.
Okay, super. The Kettaback Humane Society, that's contract service, that's part of the payment. We have that agreement. And we get down to the salt. Obviously, that is stocking for $5,246. New England Salt Company is getting ready for the winter.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Phoenix Title Services.
That was a repayment for overpayment of taxes, because every once in a while, somebody pays, and then their company pays as well.
Okay.
And we usually reimburse whoever they tell us to, and usually it's the company.
Gotcha. All right, that sounds good. The rest are state, the big ones in the rest of it, you can see, are state fees there. Treasury State of Maine there. And it looks like WB Mason, but that's COVID-19 supplies. And that's about it. The last, the last item, the biggest, I think, or one of the biggest, is $32,162, and that is the ambulance contracting service with Winthrop. Now then, in that case, I would put a motion forth to approve warrants 15 and 16 for the total amount of $105,151.55.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 15 and 16 in the amount of $105,151.55. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to 21-042, which is acceptance of a memorial bench in memory of Ken Clark. Greg Durgan's going to address us on that. I will say that I walked by that. It's a very lovely bench on the, on the trails down at the fairgrounds, and it's, it's so rewarding to see something like that donated in his memory and so forth. But Greg, if you would please address us.
Okay. It's a loaded question. Should I keep this on, or is it okay to?
You can take it off.
Thank you. I expected it to be Catherine. I really did. Okay. Good evening. Always nice to come to a Select Board meeting. Ken was our vice chair for several years on the Trails Committee. Just a little background, I don't want to take up too much of your time. Ken was famous or infamous for keeping us on track. Our discussions might wander sometimes, and Ken would say, "How does that relate to trails?" "Okay, Ken, you're right, okay." He was instrumental every year that he was on for bringing and reminding us about our mission statement and our strategic plan. And he would hold us, our feet to the fire to make sure we renewed and up those and looked at them every single year, and make sure they all matched up with the open space plan. He was involved with two other individuals from the Trails Committee and a town volunteer for updating our new map, which sounds like an easy job, but it's layers and it's GPS and it's measuring and walking with computers and everything. But he was instrumental in getting that done. He was also, he and Rob Peel took on the Eska Trail Project. They thought it'd be good to put a trail out to the Esker, which is beyond the transfer station. That meant they had to go and get agreements and easements from the town, landowners from that town road. And that has been in place for a couple of years. And then he would take time off from work to work with Kent Hill kids and/or Marantica kids on trail maintenance. And lastly, and most important, as chair, he kept me on task. I would come up with these agendas and send them to him, and he'd say, his quote was, "Greg, I'll make it pretty for us." And he would, he was great with technology. Over 45 individuals and families donated over $3,000 for the bench. I want to thank you for approving the acceptance of it after the fact, as Bruce let the cat out of the bag. It is already installed. That was a necessity. Riverside Monuments over in Riverside Drive, I guess over in Augusta, did the work, and they leave for Florida maybe today for the year, for the winter, I mean, and so they had to get in. So they put that in last Thursday. It is beautiful, Bruce, I agree with you. We more or less left, even though it was the Trails, donations to the Trails, we left it up to Lori Clark and her family members to kind of pick what they wanted, put on it what they thought was appropriate for Ken. And then we went up last Thursday, and Eric was very instrumental, I think, in getting the location of it. They were looking at it this way, and Ken said, Eric said, "Let's look at it this way." And you can understand, Bruce, if you've looked at it, it looks over the ball field and down, down that way, instead of up to the, to the road. So that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. As I said, over 45 or so individuals and families, $3,000 in donations. And if you need to know the cost of it, I think that'll be on next warrant. Am I right?
It will, yes.
Do you get enough to cover the cost?
Yes, it is, yes. And there's some leftover, and the Trail is going to talk about, with Lori Clark and her family, about how best to utilize that money. My personal thought is not to maybe buy Bluestone or Geotech, but really do something nice.
Yeah.
And we'll let you know what that is at some point.
Right.
Okay?
Any questions for Greg? I'm going to move, we accept this gift of the memorial bench in memory of Ken Clark on behalf of the town of Reed Field.
Second half.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? It's a lovely and very appropriate gift, that's the one thing I would like.
The polished granite.
Yep.
Will not, tends not to gather leachant, leachant moss and all that junk. So soap and water will take it, keep it clean, and we'll maintain it.
Great, great.
It really is a very nice setting, a very nice bench.
There you go, Eric.
And it's near the tree that was planted in Ken's memory.
There is a memorial tree for Ken there, yes.
Great. Okay, we have that motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. All in favor of the motion? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Greg.
Thank you.
You can have dinner now.
Yeah. And I'm going to send you those out.
That's right, please do. Whatever Nancy's cooking.
Just cruise?
I'm the one who asked.
The big dog.
Okay, great. I would also like to indulge the, the board, I meant to add this upfront, to, to just allow us under old business to chat about the comp plan meeting we just had, very, very briefly, just a kind of a quick recap, so that's kind of on the public record. Any objections to that?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move on to Select Board Communications. Members of the Select Board who would like to share something.
Well, we got trunk or treat coming up on the 31st. Everybody should be there by 5:00. We have right now 10 trunks, and the meeting house is going to have a pumpkin's glow walk through the woods. I purchased 58 small flashlights to hand out to the first 58 families that come by. And I bought lanterns to mark the area from the end of the trunk or treat to the beginning of the trail into the woods.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, that's great. Very gracious of you.
So I think it's going to be a fun time. I think I've got four new people that have never done it before, so that's, it's a good, good feeling, people are getting enthused.
And socially, I mean, it's just going to be, I think, a good thing for the town. We're being very careful about COVID.
I will be, I will be up in the parking lot, keeping the people six feet apart. I have a lighted mask, you won't be able to miss me.
This would be interesting.
We will be controlling that.
Tyvek suit.
All our members of the board, please.
Well, I just wanted to say in the messenger, it was great, the whole plan. And, and I know a lot of towns want to do this, and I was using your plan as a possible for some, for some folks in, in another town, just the circle, you know what I mean? Just the circuit of being able to get in.
All one direction.
All one direction, and, and to know that there has been detail and care taken. I think that's exactly right. And to that end, my Select Board communication is this. I just want to thank everyone who is working so hard during a pandemic, getting ready for school, for an election, all of this stuff. I feel like sometimes, you know, the, the fatigue of being under these things happening is sometimes a lot, but I just want to say that, you know, it's, it's all noticed, and everyone's hard work, I think, is greatly appreciated. I know especially, we'll hear from Deb later, but this is an election like no other. So thank you to everyone in town who is continuing to be safe.
Other members of the board. Seeing none, we'll move on to town staff reports. Eric, you're going to go ahead and give us our town staff reports, and we have more than one, so that's great.
All right, well, so I had done my, my town manager's report last time, so this time I just had my treasurer's report, which will make things a little bit more expedient. Check reconciliation was completed through September 30th, and as usual, our accounts are in balance, and there was no unusual activity during that period.
Was the treasurer's report available online?
Yes.
Okay. I think what happens is we, we need to put that on the Select Board page as well as the routing that goes to the public page. Because I personally didn't pick up on that.
Okay.
You don't need to provide it for me now. I'll certainly read it, but it doesn't appear in both places.
You said, there is or is not a treasurer's report tonight?
Is, yes.
Okay, because I didn't see it when I looked last night for it.
I haven't.
Would you like to share?
It, I, I'll see.
But I'm sure it's there, if you said it is, I missed it.
Please just proceed with the report.
All right, well, I'll make a note about location. All right. So with the audit, we are getting close to fieldwork. It has been a very unusual year. The auditors are keeping their distance as well as many other people. And Teresa has done a fantastic job helping to make sure that they get all the information they need to do a proper audit of our records and our accounting. So Teresa deserves some thanks for that extra burden that she took on this past couple of months here, preparing for that audit. Moving on to comments. Revenue expenditures should be about 25% for the year-to-date. Revenues for the month of September are up 24% from the same period last year as a result of motor vehicles and other revenues. And one of the most important numbers in this report is the, is the year-to-date for revenues compared to the year-to-date last year. There was such an inconsequential difference that we are at a 0.0% variance.
Wow.
To me, that shows that we're, we're catching up very quickly. Doesn't mean that it won't be long-term impacts from the coronavirus. I expect there will be as far as poverty abatements and things like that, but we're, we're catching up and pretty square as, as we move on. So Ralph, yeah?
When do the lion's share of the state revenues come to the town?
Those have already been delivered for, for homestead exemption, yes.
Homestead exemption is fully funded, then?
Yep, I think we still have, we still have some state revenue sharing to come through, because that comes through in chunks, usually two or three, but.
Quarterly, maybe, right?
It's not quite, they don't, they do it when they want to do it, basically, is what it comes down to. But, but yeah, no, we're, we're, we're looking very good.
So by the end of this fiscal year, all things being equal, we should be in pretty good shape in terms of our projections for state money coming to the town.
Yes, and actually, we did, we budgeted conservatively, and what we're seeing is we're still going to have, we budgeted less than what we're actually going to get. So our, our conservative approach paid off.
That's the easiest way to do it.
And we're going to be up, I think, will be $24,000 or so more than what, they'll provide $24,000 or so more than what was budgeted, if I recall correctly, so. Out of $200,000 in estimated revenues from that. So moving on, expenditure side, we do see a decrease for the month of September, but that's a result of changes in capital improvements and debt service. And those things, those things will vary. They're some of the most variable accounts that we have or departments that we have. And similarly, we've got protection in roads also showing some fluctuation on the year-to-date level. But again, not unusual, entirely explainable. And the highlight, I'd say, out of this whole report is that one revenue number for year-to-date.
Great.
I have a comment.
Please.
I have a different take on the income, and I don't see that we're going to have a lot going downhill. So just a difference of opinion, a difference of outlook. The state report came out for income for sales tax, and it was only down by .4 of 1%. There's a huge shift in where that sales tax income was coming from. It was not coming from the hospitality industry, but the, the general sales was up something like 60% year-over-year for the same quarter.
So durable goods and things, is that?
Right. And the automotive industry was significantly up. I don't know if that was people purchasing cars or repairing cars or how that, but that sector was another one that was large. And so that kind of got buried in the news because it isn't the dire news coming out. I mean, I just thought that was worth noting, because those are the facts, and one of those signs on the highway today says, "Spread facts, not germs." So I'm spreading the facts.
I like that, yeah.
That, that's a very good comment and observation. I will say, though, we never know what happens when a legislature convenes.
Yes, I agree, but, but just all things being equal right now, the situation does not look like the last six months were the disaster we thought they would be.
Right.
In an income sense, I'm not saying there aren't disasters around.
Right.
Well, everybody did home projects.
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
Excellent. Eric, moving on.
All right. So now we have Deb, who I hope can give us a little more information about the election and answer any questions the board might have about the process, and what a wonderful job she is doing preparing.
Thank you, Deb. And, you know, right up front, I want to mention to the public that, you know, we're really confident in how our election is managed and what we'll be doing here in Reed Field. You know, there's a lot of questions about COVID and voting in person and changes and so on and so forth. Deb's done a marvelous job keeping track of this, and on top of it, and part of the reason the board wants to hear from her in this town report is we want to make sure you have what you need.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm happy to report that we, our town is in a good, strong position. We are no different than any other town and city in the nation. We are experiencing an overwhelming response to absentee voting. We are a little more than two weeks out from the election, and of the 2,257 active voters we have in Reed Field, we have 919 requests for absentee ballots.
Whoa.
So two weeks out, that's a pretty strong turnout, not given what we'll expect to see on Election Day. I expect that we will be running a very safe, as far as the pandemic is related. If you feel the need to come and vote on Election Day, please do so. We will be running a very clean, efficient, organized, safe election. We are having it at the Kent Hill Alphond Athletic Center, which is right down the road at 1617 Main Street. It's the largest venue that the town has. It's handicap accessible, plenty of parking, well-lit, very, very, very good space for us to have a safe pandemic election. So please come if you would like to vote on Election Day. Certainly, certainly a good place to come down and vote, but you always have the option to vote absentee. Your ballot is processed exactly the same as it will be on Election Day. It's fed through the ballot counting machine, it's locked in the ballot box, and it's counted with all the other ballots on Election Day. So you can vote absentee until next week. The last day to vote in-person in the town office absentee is extended until Friday, which is actually the 30th of October. You can vote until 5:00 in the lobby on that day. If you want to take a ballot home to vote early, you may do so, but that deadline is Fri, is a Thursday at 5:00. And the town office is open for voter registration and absentee voting until 7:00 on Wednesday the 28th, if anybody needs a little extended hour to come in and get that done. So that's where we're at.
So you're having extended hours on Thursday and Friday, not for every town function, but to come and vote?
Correct, yeah. Voting and voter registration, we can do that for those, those three days, Wednesday the 28th until 7:00, and then Thursday and Friday until 5:00. The, the last day, as it has always been, to request an absentee ballot to take home, mail, electronic, or phone request is Thursday, and that's the same as it's always been. But the state did extend the in-person in the lobby voting until Fri, Friday, October 30th at 5:00. So if you want to vote in the lobby, you have up until that date to do so.
Can you give us a little bit more information? When does an absentee ballot have to be returned?
Absentee ballots, the sooner the better. If you mail your ballot, please mail it soon. It just needs one stamp on it. I have not experienced any delays in getting the ballots back. In fact, of the 919 that I've issued, I have almost 600 returned, so that's a really great rate of return, given how far, we have two weeks left to go. But slap a stamp on it, mail it in, make sure you sign the outside of the envelope. I need to receive your ballot signed no later than the close of election, 8:00 PM. So if you deliver your ballot on that day, you can bring it down to the Kent Hill Arena, but don't feel you need to wait, because we can process it just like we would normally on Election Day. It's going to get counted that night with the other ballots. Just needs to be signed, you can drop it off in the Dropbox, which we have an enhanced Dropbox coming this week, which will be very visible. There's been some delays with the manufacturing of Dropboxes, as you can imagine throughout the nation. But you can walk it in, you can hand-deliver it to one of the staff, Kristen at the desk, myself, make sure it's signed, immediate family members or the voter can drop them off. Mail it in, walk it in, Dropbox it off, whatever works. And please call me if you have any questions or you want to talk to me about the process for absentee voting. I'm happy to run through it. It's, the state has been doing this for lots and lots of years. It's very redundant, it's all paperback. It's, it's really safe to absentee ballot vote. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
And people can use the website the state set up to check to see if you've gotten the ballot back in?
Yes, that's a brand new, and that is a very, it's, it's a very, it's another one, it's another self-check for yourself to ensure that, it will show you when you requested it, when I accepted your request, when I mailed out your ballot, and if I have received and accepted your ballot. If I reject your ballot, which I won't without calling you, but if I was to reject your ballot, it would show that there as well, so you could see that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And how are you set, Deb, for the actual ballot counting? I know that there's been some authorization in terms of when you can start processing ballots and so forth, and you don't need to go into a lot of detail on that, but I just want to feel that the public and I are reassured, and I'm sure you will do this, that you have a plan in place for how you're going to process efficiently.
Yeah, yeah. So the state has always, well, for many, many years, the state has had an absentee, an early absentee ballot processing system in place, especially for the larger cities, they do it all the time, Portland, Lewiston, and lots of the larger cities do this on a regular basis, but given the pandemic situation, we really have, there's no way the staff could get through that many ballots on Election Day and still allow for Election Day voters to cast their ballot. So the state did extend the, the dates to process absentee ballots to seven days instead of five. This is the first time that Reed Field has done so, but it, we are choosing to process ballots from Tuesday, the week before, it's seven days before the election. And I chose to offer up to do it each day, because I wanted to make sure that I had enough time to process what I had. I don't think we'll need all those days to do so, but it's a public process. The, if anyone would like to inspect the ballots before doing so, call me. You can come in and inspect what we're going to process that day from 9:00 to 10:00 AM in the presence of the clerk. And then the clerks and the deputy clerks will be processing the ballots. And it's, it's a straightforward check and balance process. Public is welcome to, as long as we can accommodate you in the space, given the pandemic issues, we're happy to do so.
And these are the same ballot clerks we normally use?
It's the deputy clerks that work at the town office and myself, or if we have election clerks do the processing, it's balanced, or they D and an R.
Right.
And they're signed off, and they are appointed and sworn in officially, yes. Same as you would see at Election Day.
And can you give us an idea? I'm just asking all the questions I think the public has, I think, I know the answers to most of these.
Yes, and I'm posting them on Facebook.
Oh, good.
So, I've already got a bunch.
I do have a lot of information on the website, too, but spread the word, call me if anybody has questions I don't get to, but yeah.
When can we expect Reed Field results to be posted? And can you tell us how many ballots are being counted? Is it just one ballot this year?
There's there's one ballot in November that Reed Field is voting on. We vote on our town meeting ballot, as you know, in the summer. One ballot, it's double-sided. There is a ballot, sample ballot downstairs in the lobby, and I believe I posted one on the web, but if I did not, I will. The the flip side of it is the ranked choice presidential election. So, presidential voting is ranked choice. So, you want to feel comfortable about that before you choose to pick up your ballot or vote your ballot. I have literature on that online, I have it here in the office, I can answer some basic questions about it. It's too detailed to go into at the moment right now, but there's plenty of resources out there if you have concerns about how your vote will count.
And that's for all federal offices, right?
Yes.
And and Congress as well. Ranked choice applies on those two offices.
The flip side of the ballot where we're voting on our representatives is not ranked choice, only the presidential. You're thinking of?
No, I'm talking about Congress. So, for example, the incumbent in our district is Chelly Pingree, that's a ranked choice race.
Okay.
Yeah, so is the U.S. Senate. So, our local legislators are not.
Okay.
Our local state senators are not.
There is one side of the ballot that is ranked choice and one side that is not.
Only federal offices.
Yep.
Okay, so those will all be tallied by the voting machine?
Correct.
They are fed into either by the person who's present and processing their own ballot or by the clerks who are putting them in for the absentee.
Correct, correct.
So then at the end of the evening, it's only if there are ballots that had some sort of a issue?
Correct. So, if somebody votes with something that the the machine doesn't pick up, say, very lightly fill in with a pencil or something that's, if you vote with a blue or black ink pen, you're fine. But if you do any doodling in the margin or whatever, there's there's occasionally a handful of ballots that do get cast to the auxiliary bin that have to be hand tallied by the ballot clerks, which are your fellow residents here in Reed Field. The ninety-nine percent of the ballots are counted with the tabulator that the state provides for us that is already programmed. That's fed in, it's tallied at the end of the night. And with the ranked choice, if there is not a plurality vote, if nobody has over fifty percent of the vote, then it does go to ranked choice. The town reports the first spot winner, and then the state sends a courier to collect the the tabulator, and then they will report the winner of the election.
So, will we be posting results?
I will post the results for what our first place candidate, which is what I'm allowed to post.
Okay, that would be that evening you would expect?
I would expect so, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think I covered all the questions that are hot topic these days.
Yeah.
So, the only other question I had or 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 thought was, I've actually received some calls from folks that have said, "How can I help?" And I know you have ballot clerks that are appointed and ready to go. But if you need any additional help, for example, parking and outdoor PPP station with hand sanitizer or whatever, I'm sure we can get additional volunteers. So, we don't even need to go into it tonight, but if that exists, talk to Eric and we will figure out how to assist you on that so that you can concentrate on election only and maybe not the hand sanitizing and stuff like that.
Thanks, thanks very much, I appreciate it. Reed Field has really reached out, and I've had a lot of great volunteers. You'll see someone on tonight to get appointed for ballot clerks as well. So, you have to balance the need to put people, to get people in there to to vote with workers. So, I can't pack as many volunteers as I've had great offers for, but I will, I will follow through that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, can I just do a quick rundown just to make sure? Because I think this is very valid information. You're talking about last opportunities for what I'm calling absentee in-person voting downstairs?
Right.
Wednesday until seven, Thursday, this is October twenty seventh, Thursday, October twenty ninth, and Friday, October thirtieth, until five.
Yes, but if you want?
A regular, non-in-person ballot is the last day is Thursday.
Correct.
Exactly right. So, that's that's right after that, so I include that in there.
Your dates are wrong. If Friday is the thirtieth, then Wednesday's not the twenty seventh.
It's the twenty eighth.
Yeah, Wednesday, the twenty eighth, that's what I have, I'm sorry. Absentee ballots only need one stamp. I keep seeing that go around. Absentee ballots are processed the exact same way as in-person ballots.
Correct.
November third voting is at Kent Hills Alphonde Athletic Center, eight A M. to eight P M.
Correct.
Deb Nichols will answer your questions, six eight five four nine three nine.
Nice job.
Is there a home phone in there?
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Dan.
My pleasure, thank you, thanks for having me.
Yes.
That's my time, thank you, folks.
Great, we'll move on to, Eric, did you have anything else that you wanted to mention under Town Staff Reports?
No, no, I mean, I've got a few things, but most of them are coming up later in the agenda.
Okay, great.
Do we want to take the?
Yeah, we'll, I I will read out her appointments. I think we'll be there in five minutes.
We skipped over the.
Public comment?
No, the boards committees.
No, not yet. So, we'll move on to now Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Departments. I want to thank the Library Board of Trustees for their minutes of September nine, twenty twenty, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the Select Board? And I actually don't know if anybody's joined us via Zoom, but if they have, this is also an opportunity to give some input.
Grace's like that.
Right, any any input from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. We will move to appointments, reappointments, resignations, and we will consider the appointment of additional ballot clerks for the November third, twenty twenty, general election. And I'd like to remind the board, when we have documents now to sign because of COVID, we're just going to set them aside and everybody can sign them afterwards rather than circulating documents as we often have. So, appointed by the Select Board, we have a list of additional Democrats that have been appointed for its twenty twenty ballot clerks. Again, they're used in tandem, so there's always one corresponding member from the other party. So, we have Elaine Katz Tanish, Lisa Delorio, and Nicola Westbury, Lorraine Clark, and Judy Parrot.
Bruce, those are in addition to the first page, which is appointing Sonia Clark as warden.
That's correct. I thought we already handled Sonia at the last meeting with the initial group of clerks. But maybe not, we'll reaffirm that, so she will be, Sonia Clark would be the warden.
I vote to, or I make a motion to approve this slate?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Sonia Clark as warden and the slate that was read, that I read. All in favor? Thank you. I will move on to considering the appointment of Henry Clausen to the Planning Board. Mr. Clausen did join us by Zoom at the previous meeting, although it wasn't in regards to this. We've been waiving the appointment application in person if we have the information in front of us or we can conduct a request and interview by Zoom. I didn't think that was necessary. Could somebody move his appointment if they wish to do so? So, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Henry Clausen for a term that extends through twenty twenty-five. Is that correct? It's a?
Yes, June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, Henry Clausen to the Planning Board. Is there any discussion?
Yes, why is it five years?
Yeah.
Planning Board appointments are five years.
That would be one.
How dry, that was bone dry, Eric Dyer.
That's me, you know, but also.
Eric Dryer.
I'll also point out that the Henry had served on the Planning Board in the past, as well as the Select Board. So, he has a lot of experience in this area, has been has been active, and.
He wouldn't have had to come in anyway.
Well, it's not consecutive, so yes, but no.
Yeah, so.
Nice, well, it's it's quite a, I mean, obviously, it's quite a commitment, so, thank you, Hen.
So, he's not filling in on an expired term, he's starting from?
This is a full term, yeah. Great. So, we have the motion on the floor, I believe, and did we have a second? Do we draw a second?
Yes.
We did. Is there is there any discussion on the motion to appoint Henry Clausen to the Planning Board for a term extending through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
Where does this take us to our membership of the Planning Board? Are we back to?
Full seven.
Full seven, all right. Here, here.
All in favor? Thank you. We'll consider the reappointment of Ellen Jane Schneider to the Budget Committee. I'd personally like to go ahead and and move that appointment. Ellen has served with distinction on committee, she's a very, very good resource for the town of Reed Field to have. She has a very deep background that is of great assistance to the town. So, I'm going to move that reappointment. Could I have a second?
Second, yes.
It's been moved and seconded to reappoint Ellen Jane Schneider to the Budget Committee. Do I have any discussion or question on that, other than perhaps a thank you?
Yeah, she's really good.
Yes, and she's very smart, and she's she's also funny, and she's also on the P Ridge, so. There's a lot, there's a lot going for it.
I just want to say that she she does an excellent job with the committee, and she really helps me do my job better, which is really valuable and helpful.
Agreed, and her, I mean, for her to even do this is so, it's amazing, so.
Right, it's a big commitment in a small period of time, and then you get the rest of the year off, but it's.
It's pretty, pretty intensive for a while.
Yeah, it happens, so, yeah, here we go.
Great, okay, all in favor? Thank you, Ellen. We'll move on to old business, and we will reverse twenty zero thirty-four, take that first in consideration of the the small replacement maintenance truck. Eric, the floor is yours, I think temporarily, you're gonna, you're gonna hand off that baton, are you?
Yeah, gladly, I talk too much to these meetings already, so, no, thanks. We we have been discussing this, this is the second meeting. The board, earlier, just for reference for anybody that's watching, had considered this. We come and asked for permission to make a replacement with a very modest budget. The board, I very much appreciate, offered to increase that to get us into a better piece of equipment and give us some flexibility to look around and find out what our options are. Catherine is absolutely right about vehicle sales. There is a lot happening. Our motor vehicle revenues are exceeding expectations again, which is, you know, this far in, still still surprised to me. But it also means that there's a lot of vehicles that are being bought up, less necessarily available at this point. So, we do have a few things going on, but Anna was tasked with doing some research for us, and I want to thank Anna for taking the time and doing a diligent review of the vehicles that were out there and, you know, looking from everything from from used in rough condition to to state surplus to to new equipment. So, we followed through with that directive given by the Select Board, and I'll let Anna give her report.
Thank you, Anna.
All right. All right, so, in your packet, I wrote you a little little letter, I guess, for the two vehicle choices that I felt might be more fit. As Eric explained, we've dealt with bad trucks, frame rot being the worst of it, getting trucks from state surplus that were not meeting sale regulations, one hundred and eighty days is when they can sell vehicles after an inspection. Most of their vehicles were not meeting that. So, that put us in a bind on trying to find something within a price range that we could work with. So, with that being said, Eric and I've had many discussions, and I looked into the dealerships. Mostly, I worked with Cork Ford, where we bring our current Ford and O'Conners, and there's really nothing on the lot for used vehicles. I did find one vehicle at the Ford lot in Cork and Augusta, and it was about twenty thousand dollars for a ten-year-old truck with over a hundred thousand miles on it. And so, started looking at the fleet prices that we can get for a new vehicle, and luckily municipalities get a really good fleet price. So, I gave you some numbers on that, so I don't know if you guys have questions in regards to any of that. I could ramble about trucks all day, but.
So, why do you pick the Chevy over the Ford?
Oh, well, well, I feel that Chevy has a better towing capacity with it. They have better lasting frames, they are treated differently from the manufacturer, from the undercoating, the paint jobs, bed liners, and the tow hitches that they're used.
Okay, are you aware that the new Ford F- one fifty is aluminum frames that don't rust?
Yeah, I've I've heard mixed mixed things. Unfortunately, they don't have any of the aluminum frames in Maine, they've not been tested in Maine. They have aluminum panels on the side, and that's all that they have. Kentucky is the closest that those frames have made up this way.
Okay, because it looks like the prices are the are the same, essentially, about twenty-nine thousand.
Yep.
And a couple of dollars.
Some come with a little bit more than the next.
So, I I I see that opposite. I see that from working in the industry, the the GM products tend to rust out far more quickly. So, it's just a professional opinion.
Yep, yeah. Unfortunately, I think a lot of a lot of vehicles are, it's a lot of maintenance. I know personally on our five fifty that we have, every year, I'm I'm trying to keep that frame in shape, whether washing it down, treating it, we have fluid film that we currently use. We got a undercoating gun to keep that in shape, but it's still, obviously, there's still going to be rust. It's a plow truck, so it's, to say the least.
Keeping it clean is the number one key.
Keeping it clean.
We've found that out over many years in the town.
Yes, indeed.
So, yeah.
Now, I have a question just about the the, I know it's only a sixteen hundred dent, but the Colorado is basically a Ford Ranger.
Exactly.
And the Silverado is a full-size truck.
It is, it's a half-ton.
Right, so, so, so is this, is this meant to be like a full-sized town work truck that will now last us for a long time? Or is it meant to be a smaller, more agile addition to the trucks we already have?
So, we only have one other truck, and that's the Ford five fifty, and that's what we've been using. Currently, mostly what that's used for, prior to not having a separate vehicle, is that was used for, as a small dump truck and pulling around the dual-axle trailer.
Okay.
If we were to get a, say, something happened with the Ford and had to go into the shop, we would not be able to use a Ranger or a Colorado to tow that trailer.
Okay, and and to do plowing, is that correct?
Well, we weren't going to get, like, if we found something that was reasonable with a plow and setup, why not? The Colorado I was looking at, most of these vehicles come with a plow pre-set up, so it doesn't mean that it's like comes with a plow on it.
Right.
There's wiring in the roof of the truck that you just happen lights. It's got the extra heavy-duty front end for it, so if you were to mount a plow on, you would be more more set up than taking just an average truck and putting a couple grand.
Would you, I mean, wouldn't you think that that would be, I mean, if something did happen to the Ford truck?
As a backup?
Right, I mean, it just, you know, then it, I just want to make sure, gosh, you know, just, you want to buy right the first time, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And you want to buy quality or you buy twice, right?
I don't know that we want to put the expense, though, into having a whole second plow setup just on the.
No, I.
The chance that.
Oh, and I I agree.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, if that's, you know, is that even part of it? Because I think it is a big expense, it's a big thing to buy, and 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 it's visible.
Right.
It's a visible thing to buy.
Well, this is a much more agile, smaller vehicle than the current Ford.
Much. Ain't that the truth?
And but it's still not small because it's got the crew cab, so you can put four people in it comfortably, safely.
You could put five people in it, in that in that cab, and the backseat does flip up. So, the one issue that we do have with the five fifty is that it's just a street cab. So, if we're out trying to cut trees and do stuff, we run into the problem where we put our chainsaws, where we put in our our P P E, so we're kind of just cramming it in with us, or we bring a second vehicle and put all of that in the summer when we have a summer helper. All that stuff would go typically in our pass trucks in the backseat. I'd go out with the 550 and meet with Ben and whoever else is the summer helper and either get these trees out of the way or do brushwork and.
So now you can take the two trucks together and meet your needs if we get one of these trucks?
If we, if we, yes, if we got a second truck, ideally either the extended cab or a crew cab. But having two, two trucks with just a straight cab is not the best ideal, but if we found something for the right price, we were willing to.
So we're looking at probably more than five years on this truck?
I would expect these to last 10, honestly. For a new vehicle, I mean, I would say a minimum of 10. I'd, I'd like to push it. These aren't high-mileage vehicles. They're not getting a ton of road miles. They're not doing a lot of highway. They're, they're doing some work, but this truck particularly is what we use primarily for bringing stuff around to the cemeteries and more like day-to-day routine, hey, I'm going to go check out a pothole type work. It doesn't make sense to, to, to mobilize the 550 for a lot of that stuff. So it is a bit more of a nimble truck, but both of these, we're not talking about crazy miles. We might put, I don't know, 4,000 a year on them.
When I was talking to the dealerships, I said on, on a very high end, we were going like 5,000 or 6,000 per year.
Yep.
And if you're not using it for plowing, it's not going to get the same type of exposure to calcium chloride. So it should, it should be able to last and we won't put it in the sand and salt shank ever.
That's right, never again. And, and O'Connor, you did, did you, I mean, obviously, O'Connor was the best deal you could get. I mean, those folks are the ones that you want to work with the best.
Yes, yep, in my, in my opinion, yes. And I did call around to a couple of dealerships and it just didn't seem like they were willing to offer fleet prices. And it was just like, I had to talk to one more person, one more person, one more person. Both of these places, I was able to just go in, talk right to the person, either sit down or have them email me over something later, look at a few things on the lot and within three hours I had options and answers. And O'Connor's even actually gave me more options than what I went in for. So I only went in there looking at two and they gave me the whole list of four of different things to make it more versatile on like what, what would work for the town as they knew what we were looking for, so.
Good to know. Thank you very much. I, 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 I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions for Anna? The Colorado, you see that is the least workable?
As least what?
Least workable option?
It's, um, it's definitely a smaller, smaller, we would be, the towing ratio on that has me worried after I did more research on it. So I'll admit, but in comparison, looking at what it was and exactly what we need it for, but having the diverse effect with trying to, if we needed to use it for something different, we would be caught in a bind.
Okay.
So.
And if we're looking at a 10-year window?
Yep.
Probably ought to err a little bit on the side of more versatility.
Yes, and the Colorado was very comparable with the towing ratios. So the, and as it's listed on there, we're looking at 3,500 pounds. Our John Deere mower alone is 2,000 pounds. And then we have the trailer plus any other equipment we put onto it. So we'd be cutting it pretty close.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I knew what I wanted to do.
Does the board have any thoughts about the, the payment difference between, and maybe Eric, you even have a recommendation on us, between using a five-year plan versus a three-year plan in terms of what we have available to start with and where we want to end and how we want to plan and how we want to budget?
So, yeah, I guess I'll answer that pretty directly. We could buy this outright now. I'd rather not do that. I'd like to, with the, with the cost of money right now, I think it's well worth going with a five-year to help spread this out. And I think, as we discussed many times during the budget process, if you can match your borrowing with, with something close to the life expectancy of the, of the equipment, you're, you're usually better off from a budgeting perspective. I think the difference might be $1,000 in interest, maybe less than that between the two options.
It was like $600.
$600 difference. So my recommendation is that we go with five-year financing and Andrew Skogan Bank was very responsive and Anna as well. Two weeks ago, the board gave me this directive to, to go back and try again. Anna was on vacation, came back in a very short period of time, was able to do a tremendous amount of work and prepare this for us. So my recommendation would be to, to, to finance with a five-year. I'm withholding a recommendation on the trucks because I don't know anything about them, so.
Well, you definitely, I would think for the little bit difference in money, we want, we want to get the heavier vehicle. I mean, I, I have to pick.
Get the full size with the four seats.
I should say that I do trust Anna's judgment and Ben's. They talked about this a lot. And the fact that I ride along sometimes, I'd love to have a seat in the back as opposed to sitting in the middle, so. That's really from my own personal.
That's a kind way of saying.
We let Ben ride in the middle.
Yeah, that's right.
Not a stick anymore.
I will throw out there that the, the Chevy, those trucks are built to be work trucks, so the interior of them don't have the carpeted floors. It's all hard plastic. So it's much easier to clean, disinfect, so on and so forth, versus the others that are carpeted with hard plastic.
What's, what does delivery look like? We call and we got, we pick up the phone and we're, we get it?
For, for O'Connor's, they just got that Silverado on the lot last Friday. So I was talking with Eva's, who I've been working over there and she said we can, we can call up. She, she's ready. We just got to figure out our finances and it's there.
The only thing is they won't hold it, so you can't invest.
It hasn't made it out on the floor yet. It's just in the back lot.
That's right.
I remember one piece of advice I gave my daughter a long time ago was, there's always another vehicle.
There's always another vehicle.
There's always another, but obviously we have a need and we do want to move efficiently on this. So I'm personally ready to, to entertain a motion or I'll make a motion. Okay, I'm going to move that we authorize the town manager to proceed with a purchase per the consensus advice that he heard from this board and to finance it over five years with the staff's recommendation.
Sure.
Was that clear enough in terms of a motion for you to know exactly what we want you to do?
Very clear.
Okay, good. So it's been moved in second. Is there a discussion? For the public, this is a different step. I mean, we obviously have been purchasing for a number of years, trucks that have either failed us or, or, or not been adequate to the job or have no trade value when we're done and so on and so forth. And really, the market has changed from the thinking that we were at five, 10 years ago and I think we're being responsive to that and responsible to it, responsible to the town's financial longevity of putting equipment in service that's going to do the job and, and, and serve the community well. So with that little speech, at a reasonable cost.
Two and a quarter percent interest.
Plus you can purchase it at the end of the lease for $1.
Yes.
Yeah, not bad.
It is, that's, seriously, I should say, the Andrew Skogan Bank, that is a proper lease purchase for equipment. It's not like a traditional.
Take time for $1.
Not a car lease where we would own it or we would lease it for five years and then give it back to them, which we did look at.
With some mileage penalty if you.
We, we looked into that.
It doesn't work.
We, one little scratch happens.
Thank you for your work, Anna.
Yes, you're welcome.
Absolutely.
Alright.
We do need a vote, though. All in favor of the motion? Post. Four to one, thank you. We'll proceed then with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen.
21, thank you, Anna. Thank you for coming down. 2114, which is a fire, fire station and library building project update. And so Ralph or Eric or Ann, Eric, if you have anything you want to update us on in terms of where we are? We're a little closer, right?
Yes, we are. I'm trying to think. I thought I had.
It's always the goal here.
Before where we were.
Okay.
So it's towards the front of the agenda.
That's right, yeah, okay. There we go. There we go. Right there now, yep, yep.
Yeah.
Out of order stuff always confuses me, but, so we, we are much closer. We, we still don't have final estimated numbers for sprinklers. But it doesn't matter at this point because we know we're not going to be doing that this time around, yet, not yet. Lee is setting up a meeting with the fire marshal so we can discuss that plan going forward to implement the, the installation of sprinklers, not just for the new bay and new addition, but for the entire building, including the apparatus bay and the old office space. So doing the, the right thing by the building to, to offer full protection and alleviating the need for any kind of challenge walls or other absurd architectural creations. So I, I was there today for the final walkthrough to develop what we consider or call the punch list, those little items that are left at the end of the project. And we were down to things like a scratch in the paint, a door that might not close quite right, checking on which line in the data array is the feed line that serves, that goes back to the, to the, to the router. Little things like that. So we're, we're very close to complete and I, I want to make a, the offer to the public and out of the select board, anybody that wants to take a look at that building, let me know and I can either let you in or, or work with the fire chief. I want people to see this. We can't do it all, all together in a, in a very safe way, but I think it would be great to, to show this building off.
Can we do, Ralph's seen it. Could we do a guided film walk?
We could, yeah. I'll talk to Dennis about that, yeah.
Please do, yeah. I'll be there. I think that would be great, yeah.
Yes. And then we could debut it at a select board meeting.
We could debut it at a select board meeting and we could also then have it on the website.
Yeah.
A virtual tour.
So on this list, it says that we did not accept the paving and grade changes?
Yes, so that was the proposal to pave, you have the new bay and you have the, kind of the road that goes alongside or the access. We opted to, to, for, for $10,000, we said gravel's fine, thank you. And so we'll be putting in a couple truckloads of crushstone base that we have available and it will be a wonderful surface. It will plow just fine. And if we get it down in the next couple of weeks, it will be ready for this winter.
And then the gutter and old building door work?
Yes, so we have a couple of spots in the building where we'd like to have gutters just to help get the water away from the, the new concrete pads and asphalt walkway that are great, but as you know, those things in the wintertime can ice up very quickly. So we're trying to, with the extended slush season we've been seeing, get some of that stuff away from the building. And the gutters, so that's the gutters, the, the doors. Right now, we have two existing passage doors on the old building that are in very rough shape that I'd like to see replaced to give the full security to the building that deserves also energy efficiency and so on. Basically, just complete the envelope so that we have, we can protect what we have there.
Is that one of those, the door I asked about last meeting?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yep. So that's an estimate right now. If it's a red, it's either an estimate or something I wanted to highlight. So I did talk to Steve Wood today at that site visit and he, he's getting numbers from, from a couple of door companies and I think that we'll be able to do, do the work for that, maybe a little bit more because everything continues to increase in price for building materials. So that's that. The, the revenue side, you, you see a couple of changes here. I did, I did take out the, the fire department's additional donation after we discussed the fact that they are contributing in other ways in other areas. So this is something that was discussed prior, but also I've highlighted the select board contingency. And at this point, not knowing what the future is going to hold for this project or for the library project for that matter, I think that it would be best to just hold off on, on, on final judgment on that until, until we have a better picture. But as you can see, the bottom line is that we, even without that additional $10,000 from the select board, we still have about $30,000, $35,000 safely available that we could use for the library projects to, to supplement or supplant if they don't get grant funds, the work that needs to happen there and also to put some seed money in for a sprinkler system for the, for the fire station.
Is the grant funds that the library is applying for, are those intended to be used to do that outside escape?
Yes, we, we did.
So, so that piece of the project could be funded alternatively if that grant.
Absolutely.
Okay, timing of the grant, should we get it?
The timing of the grant would be, I think, sometime this winter. It's the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation, which they, they are, were encouraged to reapply. They, they do oftentimes give multiple and repeat grants and we made a point of showing that we've invested $120,000 into this building that we made the most of the money they gave us last time. So I think we're in a very good position to get a second round, which, as I noted, is pretty common and we were encouraged to do by the foundation.
And they, they were very quick to respond last time if I, I'd like to use the word, I'd like to use the word scarily fast with Stephen King. Let the record show.
My hope would be that, obviously, we get something from the foundation, but that we complete all the capital expenditures for the project within this fiscal year.
Absolutely.
So, and, and the primary thing that to my mind is left on the agenda is across the street at the library and that's the second-floor egress.
Yep.
That, that to my mind takes, takes precedence over everything else at this point. And we should, we should get a number as quickly as possible as to what it will cost and if there's grant money, that's great, but I.
We need to get those upstairs numbers, too.
Yeah.
And if there's, if there's leftover in terms of capital project melded money, after that second-floor egress is done, then we could talk about apportioning it between what leftover fire company needs might be, what you might set aside for capital non-recurring for sprinklers and what you might do for the electrical work, for example, in the second floor of the library. So that we kind of split it out equally if we can, but.
Well, I think that electrical is already in the, what we're planning.
Yeah, we, this, this, this current fiscal year, we have, I think, about $15,000 available for.
So that was outboard of the numbers that are in here for this capital.
Yes, because, because I wasn't including electrical work. I mean, that, that's more operating, right? This, 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 this was all really capital-related stuff. And so the operating of, of, of doing wall repairs or even replacing the front set of stairs at the library, that, that ramp that's falling into the ground, that stuff is considered, in my view anyway, operating expenditures and we budget.
And it's funded.
Extra for that, yes, absolutely.
In the operating budget.
Yep, yep.
We just need numbers so we can get it going.
Yeah, so that's the next, next in queue. I'm, I'm trying to clear, clear some things out and I think we're, we're, we're making progress. It's always slow but steady, but yeah, that's, that's definitely in the, in the shortlist.
And I just wanted to clarify one thing and then I'm finished. The $38,000 bottom line does not include the FY '21 $10,000 from the select board?
No, that, that would, sorry, yes, that would. So I guess I should say 20, we have 20, about 25. If you don't include that $10,000.
Because we have to take out the three for the doors, so we have 25 without the contingency, which we are still planning on using as long as we have the money available.
Yeah, if there's not, I mean, if, if we have the money, I think it'd be best to leave that for a different use. I mean, there's lots of things, the comp plan would be one example, the broadband project. I, I did talk to somebody about that today. That's another discussion, but anyway, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you. Moving on, under old business, I did want to add the comp plan. Just, I, I wanted to update the public that we did have an informational meeting on the comp plan at, just prior to this meeting. Particularly, we wanted to, anybody who was interested in serving on the comprehensive plan committee, I wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to hear what was involved and I think we got a really good picture of what that was, so. Thank you, KB. And I think we got a really good picture of what that was. So thank you, KB Cog, for coming to that meeting. I did want to ask a couple of questions. We have nine members of the comprehensive plan from sending committees. And three voter at large that we will appoint at the next meeting or we will fill the slate as far as we reasonably can. The, I did ask if we had any common questions or anything that you send those to Eric, you can still do that. I did have a couple of thoughts to follow up on this. Do we want to add one or two alternates to our appointment list?
I think last time we had said that that was fine, but we didn't want to expand the number of actual members.
Right, yeah.
So we were going to leave it at, I think it was nine, but I thought we had talked about three alternates.
My recollection was two, but it could have been three. You know, my concern too is certainly I don't want to make the committee unwieldy as a combination of alternates. And and so the the idea of alternates is to actually participate to a great degree. So that they can understand and step in. So you're really, you really are expecting alternates to attend meetings.
I don't know that we need to fix a number. I think. It ought to be kind of a moving target. Once committees are set up to deal with the various components of developing the plan. There may be certain areas of expertise where alternates might be helpful. And maybe those committees. With the blessing of the select board, should be able to recommend additional support staff or alternates, if you will.
Well, I do have, yeah.
And structure it that way.
I do have a suggestion in in regards to that. As far as alternates go, I think we should just state it upfront if we want to have some alternates and go ahead and appoint them at the select board level. But really, once this committee is often running, it's not a select board project. I don't see it that way. We we will have a sending member. We will be reported back to because we're elected officials and we should be. But it's their, it's their job and we want to make sure that we allow that committee to operate. I'm not going to say independent because it's wholly interdependent, if you will, with so many aspects of of the town. So I was going to suggest that in addition, on the organization administration, that we add the language. The committee may, from time to time, establish temporary subcommittees for a defined period of time to focus on a particular topic or area. Subcommittee members may be appointed and charged directly by the committee. And may consist of several members with a particular area of expertise or interest to provide guidance and recommendations to the committee. So that allows, that authorizes the committee to appoint its own subcommittees if it so wishes. And they can be completely made up of outside experts if they want or whatever, and we don't have to bless all those appointments.
And are those Reed Field residents?
Well, my understanding would be that they would be, yes. Reed Fields, yep.
So I have a, I have a question regarding this and the select board. I I I wondered if it would be possible and I would offer, I I think I should be on this committee. I think that it makes.
You can stop.
Okay, yep. I just think it makes the most sense in in sort of having some time away from it. I I am sort of, I I don't want to over commit myself, but I also feel like I just got reelected. If there is any, you know, depending on how things go, if I, you know, I have the longest term, I guess, technically to serve. So I am gonna, there is going to be sort of some organizational memory. It makes the most sense. I I can commit to this. So so if it's okay with you guys, I would like to represent the select board on the 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 comprehensive plan committee. And 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 remind me constantly what Bruce just said. That it's 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 for the select board to just sit there and listen, well, not, you know, you know, just just listen. We don't have to chair it. We don't have to do any of that. So I I mean, if that's okay.
I don't think it's for you to listen. I think you will be participating fully.
Sure.
We will only.
We'll be listening.
Yes, yes, that's good.
The board at large will only listen, just like the rest of the planning board will only listen. They will have two members there, I think it was two.
Yeah.
That will be actively talking and committing.
Perfect, thank you.
Am I getting that right? Does everyone agree with that?
No, you are getting that right.
Okay.
And you know, I do think, you know, if, I mean, I considered this at one point. And one of my initial thoughts was, you know, I I've served on other ad hoc committees and so on and so forth. Is I I don't think it's a good idea for the select board sending, sent select board member to chair it. I mean, I I that's just my recommendation.
Different impression going forward.
Exactly. It's it's it is about appearance and impression to some degree.
Yeah.
But in in the other thing too is, and I'm speaking to the people who have applied, I have no idea if they're still listening to us. They probably aren't. But you know, really, the job of the committee chair here has no more lifting than anyone else in the committee. It is more to facilitate, if you will. Probably the person who's a secretary is going to have a little bit more work than other folks. But, you know, that can be done pretty efficiently too. So.
Can the comp plan have a secretary, Eric, a paid staff secretary?
It could. I think that would be a challenge with our current staffing unless we were perhaps to hire someone to volunteer. Or what am I saying, trying to say, paid paid volunteer, paid member of the public who'd be willing to do that. I think with our current staff, the the staff that we were able to stack, talking about sending, would be myself. And and perhaps other members of staff for specialized discussions, for example, infrastructure, I would hope, and I can participate. For things involving, you know, conservation, maybe there's a time when when Mr. Ladoo, our assessing agent. Or or COO Officer Jamie Hansen could attend. But outside of that, I think having a standing secretary from the the town. Larger towns, that's definitely something that's done. It's done for a lot of committees in larger towns. But I think with this one, it would be hard and.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be hard, but we we could. I mean, I think if we had someone that was willing to do that. As a as a side gig, we could entertain that, yeah.
That could be a stifled thing that we could probably manage this year and put into the following year's budget if you wanted to.
Yeah.
It would not be a a huge expense, I would not.
It it would be valuable because a lot of the idea of these committees is that you have the people there participating for a reason. And when you're secretary, unless you're exceptional like Ellen, you can't do both. Ellen Schneider, who does it for the budget committee, I don't know how she does it, but.
Because you want to participate and have the discussion, but also keep the notes.
Participation, yeah. So I'd say the participation is the priority. So it's a very good suggestion, Catherine.
I I think it's a suggestion that Catherine's made that we should really follow up on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, thank you.
Good. Let's let's zero back to alternates. My thought is that there would be a couple. Hi, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good. I would think there would be two. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we had not specified in the minutes.
Okay.
That sounds great.
So we'll put a plus two. Eric, I'll give you some language to put in that document.
Thanks for passing that along.
And how about the authorization for them to do subcommittees of registered Reed Field voters?
Yeah, that would be their choice, I think.
Do we have the authority to do that?
Well, actually, what we had is a guidance document that Eric wrote. And yeah, we have full authority to do that. We're we're appointing the committee and charging it.
Right, but do we have the authority to allow them to appoint? That's all.
Oh, I don't, I don't see that as a problem whatsoever.
Certainly delegate some portion of it.
They're really appointing resource people.
It wouldn't be a formal appointment.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it would not be a formal town appointment. In other words, okay, so for example, I'll give a good example, hopefully, is we're talking about natural resources. And they contact all the lake associations and they say, we're going to be working for the next three months on this. Would you be willing to send a representative from the lake association to help us as an expert on this subcommittee that's only going to exist for four months?
Gotcha.
That's my, what I envisioned.
Okay, and so in that case.
But I don't want to, I.
Resident, and that's okay because they're a group that are vetted by the town. And we we give them money and resources and they are in control of something. So I think that's good.
Okay.
I'm happy.
Should we vote on this?
Sure.
Okay. You want me to reread it or are we all set on understanding it?
I'm I'm okay.
I'm good.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve what Bruce read about the comprehensive plan to appoint subcommittees from the committees. They're not official appointments and to also allow for two alternates to the official committee.
Good. And now what that'll allow is we're not going to make a a whole bunch of subcommittee appointments.
Right.
And they will be basically be in charge of their own resources. Great. So it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Do we need to add in the secretary piece?
I think we're giving guidance on that, but you know, the, it does mention the secretary as that they would choose a secretary. So what I would do is I would, I would probably leave that there, see what Eric comes up with. And we would just strike the fact that they would have a secretary that they would elect from themselves if we were to provide a recording secretary. That's essentially what we're, what we would be doing, is a recording secretary.
I like the idea of leaving it in there because there will be check check top times when like for instance tonight where our staff aren't available. Or somebody might not be available. So I think that having that role is important. But if we had a recording secretary, that would be exactly what what we need, I think.
Yeah, I mean, for example, their secretary could be in charge of their their correspondence. Right, so, okay.
Okay.
Great. All in favor of the motion? Thank you. Thank you for coming by. Did you want to address the board?
No, just.
Okay, great.
Just out for driving stuff.
It's good to see people.
Good. I've taken so many things and changed the order here. I'll try to get back on track. I know, you got me. So this is the reading of a town forest deer hunting blind and tree stand policy. It's in your packet. I read it.
It's Jerry, look at that.
It's very direct. Oh, there's Jerry. Great, good. Hi, Jerry.
Hi there.
I'm glad you joined us. We are now at your item on the agenda, the deer hunting blind and tree stand policy, which I was introducing is very simple and direct forward. So I I certainly don't see any point, any problem with it. But you're here, so let's go ahead and give you the opportunity to comment on it and its development.
Sure, just a little background. Hunting has always been allowed at the the town forest. That's been our policy from the beginning. Last year, for the first time, at least to our knowledge, a hunting blind showed up on the town forest. And was reported to the Conservation Commission. We realized that we should probably have a policy about such things. And so we embarked upon that without really any pre-conditions or sense of where it would end up. I think we had members that were opposed to allowing hunting blinds or tree stands in the town forest. Others that were strong advocates for it. In the end, we agreed to allow for them feeling that the areas available for hunting in town are diminishing. As posting increases and town forest is one of the places where people can and that the increasing number of people are using blinds and tree stands as hunting. So we went ahead and developed the the policy that you have before us. I would just maybe before I get to it, you know, from our point of view, was really not a safety issue. I don't think there's anything to suggest that hunting from blinds or tree stands is more dangerous to. To humans than hunting in more traditional, without such. Structures is, but it was a question more of compatibility with non-hunting uses. That people might be intimidated by seeing them if they were hiking in the town forest. And might view themselves as being in some some danger, whether or not that was true. But as I said, in the end, we felt that it was important to allow these structures or at least to give it this policy a try. It follows along with the state regulations from IFNW. And, you know, tries to address the concerns of keeping them away from trails. And the open area, the farmstead area in the town forest. To avoid any damage to the town forest resources, so nothing that's permanently attached to trees or the ground. Providing guidance as to when they can be put up and when they must be put down. Be kept free from litter at all times and the sites left clean. They need to be marked by who the owner is, which I believe is a state requirement anyhow if you put a blind on private land. So we'll know who is out there and to receive permission in advance for doing that. So we wanted to set up a system by which the hunter was interested, they could come by and make their interests known. And go ahead and do it in accordance with these guidelines, so.
Do we, do we need to approve this or are we just looking at this in an informational?
I think we need to approve it.
Yeah.
The other thing that occurs to me is often we give policies two readings, but with hunting season coming up. I think we probably should waive this second reading if the board feels that this is very direct. And there aren't a lot of questions. The other question I had was whether this should be folded into any other existing policy. Or eventually, maybe after trial, is a policy folded into an ordinance or or whatever. Eric, I think I had a brief discussion with you on that. I can't remember.
Yeah.
What we were talking about exactly.
We were talking about the firearms ordinance.
Oh, yes, yeah, perhaps folding, folding it into that ordinance. But let's go ahead and start it as a policy and then.
Since they're trying, actually trying it.
Right, right. And then, of course, if you did fold it into firearms policy, I mean, ordinance, you may have to talk about other properties and and of similar.
Which might be wise anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a great trial and appreciate Jerry and the Conservation Commission bringing me forward and and listening to my suggestions. Some of them, not all of them, but that's okay. Like Bruce always says, I don't always get what I want, so it's okay. But I think it's a great, a great process and I'm glad to see that this is being considered and allowed. Because I personally feel that these are safer for for hunters because they they have the opportunity to have a little bit of concealment. They're not in such a rush to 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 maybe try to make a make a shot. So I think it's a great, a great, it's great to clarify.
Yep. Ralph?
Perhaps we should include language here, if I'm not missing it, that that states that placement of these blinds shall be in conformance with the existing firearms ordinance.
I don't think the existing firearms ordinance addresses this at all. It really is just for firearms. And I just always suggested that as a place where this might live because there's no other place for something like this, but I I believe.
Set up a blind within less than 500 feet of a building on in the in the town woods property?
You wouldn't be allowed to. You still, you still have to meet state law. And so a- any place that you're allowed to use a firearm, I guess, if we had an overlap here, but.
I think number six takes care of that, that it has to comply with all main department.
As long as our ordinance is based on state regulations, that's fine.
Yes, well, and this is, this is just, this is just a policy at this point. What we're talking about is would we eventually fold it into the firearms pro- ordinance, which would be a regular review process. And then we may open up that ordinance to other other considerations as well. And this is one pro, this is one singular, yeah, this is, you're right.
Yep.
Again, good, good point. So this is one singular piece property too that we're talking about, the town forest.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the deer hunting blind and tree stand policy at the Reed Field Town Forest, proposed by the Reed Field Conservation Commission, October 2020, and waive the second reading.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the policy and waive the second reading. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, as always, Jerry, for, you know, really giving us some good work here and and and. Thank you, as always, Jerry, for, you know, really giving us some good work here and delivering a good consensus piece of sensible process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Not rushing anybody, but we are at 8:01 and we have a meeting till 8:15.
I think we're on track.
I think we're pretty good.
Very much so.
Thought you'd like an update.
I love that. She is the timekeeper.
She is the timekeeper.
We need that. We need that, absolutely.
So we will consider the proposed schedule and process for the fiscal year '21-'22, which is a 10-minute discussion, which I really don't know if we'll use 10 minutes. It is very reminiscent, if you will, of the process that we've been using for the last, well, since Eric.
I think he just changed the date.
Since Eric just joined us.
Well, it's fallen even three that we've done with this type of approach.
Are there one or two changes that you do want to highlight?
Um, well, I guess.
You don't have to.
Don't have to, yeah. Not really. I just want to say that these were adjusted. I believe we have avoided, you know, all of the usual pitfalls of February vacation, April vacation, religious holidays. I tried very hard to make that happen. I guarantee I missed one, at least, because it always happens that way, that there's something on here that conflicts. I will say that I did run this, the Thursday schedule by the Budget Committee, and every person can do Thursday evening meetings. We live in training, so it's great that they kind of keep that open. And so, yeah, this works with the committee. I think it's pretty comprehensive. No major changes. I originally thought about moving the capital expenditure piece further back, but honestly, I don't see a real good spot for it, and I think that doing it, I believe in January.
End of February.
End of February. There we go, yeah. We'll still meet our needs, because we're going to be discussing this stuff as we go along anyway. We know what projects we're looking at. Something new might come up, but we'll have a couple months to adapt to that if it does. But we, the board has done a good job of prioritizing capital projects, and we've talked about it consistently for the last couple of years, so I think we're in a very good spot. Again, a fairly robust process, a lot of work. The items with a green tab are Budget Committee meetings. We've tried to alternate those with Select Board meetings, so that I have time to modify following budget review and following Select Board review, and keep a rolling process going. I did move the one change I want to highlight, as I moved the second public hearing closer to the town meeting date, by about two weeks, maybe, maybe close to a month, before, further back, and I think that it was, it might have been one reason for lack of interest or lack of attention, is that it wasn't getting to be that time. People weren't thinking about it. So we had discussed that briefly last year, and I said, you know, it makes sense to move it up a little bit closer to the date, because this is just the public informational piece. The decision points are still very much the same out of necessity, because of the unique system we have for secret ballot voting.
My only request is if you could put the little green box that says equals Budget Committee meetings.
Yes. Right, a legend.
Yeah.
Well, you have a legend for the big boarder, so that would be great.
Yeah.
I think it's perfect. I have no issues.
My only thought is that the two public hearings, if you will, we have about six weeks in between them, six or seven weeks. Should they be closer?
Well, so they used to be, and I recall a discussion saying that, well, they were too close and people weren't paying attention, or something to that effect. I mean, this is a year ago almost, so maybe less than that. But you can have these wherever you'd like. Once we get to, that first hearing date really is the one that's most fixed. The second one could float anywhere in that, almost within two months of time, and still we have to do it at least 10 days.
The first one is fixed, so we can develop the ballot.
Exactly.
And back off the number of days, and so on and so forth. Okay, that answers my question.
I really like.
Anyplace you like it.
Yeah. I really like the idea that you're putting public comment and recommendations on draft budget here. This is when you do that. Then, that way people can understand the process a little bit better.
I guess in looking at it, I'm not quite as happy as I was. It doesn't give much time, if I was a member, just a member of the public and not sitting on a board, to feel like I was going to have due consideration given to my comments. If I'm making them on the 25th and on the 29th, the Select Board is going to make a Maybe if there was a week in between that, so maybe if it was seven days earlier than the 25th, what would that make it? And that would still be in that same period. It would be after our last meeting.
Yeah. So the reason that that falls in that order, and this is the crisis we have with timing, is that in the past, we've had criticism that the board changed something before we had the public hearing on the final budget, or after, excuse me, after we had the public hearing, and then something changed. And this whole schedule is backed way up against the 60 days in advance of the meeting that we have to have the warrant available. So this is, I could try to find a way to squeeze everything back to make room for it.
Well, no, I was just saying, if you made, if we're meeting on the 15th of March.
Yep.
Then on the 18th, on that same week's Thursday, have the public budget meeting then, because then that gives us a chance to take in anything that's said and think about how we might want to change things. If we hear it on a Thursday, we have Friday and Monday to think about it, really, because then we'd be meeting that night to make decisions.
So you, so move that back to the 18th? I think that's possible, yeah.
I don't know what anyone else thinks. I think just the appearance of having more time is.
Yeah. That may conflict with February vacation. I think that's why that gap was there.
Nope. February vacation is in March.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, sorry, yeah. All right. There were so many things.
I was trying to beat you to that one.
But, yeah, yeah.
Well, when you go back and find out what's, why you don't have it there, let us know.
Yeah, well, no, I can make the adjustment. I think I'll see if there's something in the way. It might have been a religious holiday. I, yeah, this stuff is.
It's okay. I mean, it's okay if it's there.
But I'll try to move it back. I'll make a note.
Well, isn't that President's Day or something?
No, that's February.
Easter?
Nope.
Nope.
That's April, well, end of March.
I'll run up through the filters and see what we come up with.
But that's on a Sunday.
That's right.
So on Good Friday.
Okay, so.
Thursday's off.
So there may, there may, there may be an adjustment for the 3/25 date.
I think it would be a good adjustment.
So barring that adjustment, we generally approve this by motion, I believe.
Yes.
And so why don't we take a motion that this will be our preliminary outline for the budget warrant, subject to reasonable change?
So moved.
Second.
So I guess I stated a motion. Okay, you, you're just.
I moved what you said.
Yeah, thank you. And Chris seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to the automobile graveyard permit renewal applications. They are in your packets. They are all renewals. We did not ask the operators to be here tonight. Were there any notations that the CEO, he did his conditions of approval, which to me looked like the same standard ones across the board?
These are all standard conditions.
And there were no deteriorating situations or anything like that, that were being pulled out to be addressed? Is that correct?
That is. I will point out, though, the Scott Lucas and the Lucas Auto Parts and Savage was an aspirational inclusion. We were not able to finish that process, and so that one is not ready for approval. However, the Ken's Dragon and Antique Auto Recycling both are ready. Jamie has done inspections, and both have paid their permit fees and completed the application process.
I'm going to move we approved the Ken's Dragon Auto Incorporated and the Antique Auto Recycling Automobile Graveyard Junkyard. What's the word?
Application.
Applications.
I'm here for you. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, that's.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. They operate for a year under that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's always an annual process.
Unless sooner revoked by the Select Board.
And so, and the other one, Scott Lucas, just as a note, may come up next to the meeting. Any discussion on the motion?
I have one comment.
Please.
Is this all of the graveyard junkyards in town? Do we know?
Those are the three licensed. We probably have a few others that might qualify, but we've tried to keep an eye on those and keep them cleaned up. So these are the three operating businesses that provide this service.
And, but Jamie will be making regular rounds to make sure that that's all we have.
Yes.
That is something we do, we perform due diligence on.
And if issues are reported, we do look into those, as we've done in the past.
It seems like we had more in the past, so I'm just.
Yeah, we had more, more, then we have more junkyard applications.
We may have, the last couple of years, I did look back, we've only had these three.
Yeah, I'm pretty, yeah. That's what I recall.
Thank you.
Did we vote?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. The annual town manager review process, we've used a fairly consistent process of 360-degree review for the last several years. We did eliminate the six-month intervals after the first, what was it, about 24 months or something like that? I'm very comfortable with the process and managing it as we have in the past, but I want to make sure that we're giving notice to the public, A, that we're doing the annual town meeting review process, manager, town review process, personnel process, and take any suggestions that there may be.
I am very happy with the process, the way we've done it the last few years.
And I'm glad we're talking about it before it expires this year. Just. So will we try to get this done in our November meeting?
I think we'll be able to do either the part one then, and we may have to do a second meeting that would be perhaps by Zoom, that would only be.
An approval.
An approval, yeah.
Okay, and those both take place in executive session?
Executive sessions, yes.
So maybe we could schedule that for prior to our November meeting, the first one?
We hear you. Yep. So that's dependent on me getting material out, because we have used the same standard processes. It's a matter of just updating it and getting it out. And, and then I can just go ahead, if you're agreeable to this, and just match you with one of the five categories.
Yep.
And I've been trying to just kind of rotate people through those.
Yeah, I've never had the same thing.
Yeah, so.
Dennis, make sure you get things like this from him when he's done with them.
No.
Electronically.
Oh, yes.
They're open records.
They're in the file.
They'll be available.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We don't need to vote on anything there. I just wanted to give notice and see if there were any recommendations. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?